Thank you to Patrick and Ed for joining us tonight. Again, with the questions, you will have two minutes for the introduction, two for each question, and then two for your conclusion. So I will let Carly get started. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So for introduction, please provide an introduction. Tell us about yourself, background, education, and why you are running for county supervisor. And Patrick, we'll start with you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to begin with a thank you to the chamber for hosting this and the village for providing the space and all of you for coming out on a, well, it was a rainy day. It looks like the sun's coming out now. That's nice. I'm again Patrick Miles and I'm running for reelection in the county board. I'm honored to serve the residents of McFarland, the town of Dunn, and the neighborhoods of April Hills and Secret Places. My wife and I have lived here since, well, we've lived here 24 years now. And our son is a junior in high school. I have a BA in English, a minor in writing, so it stands to reason that I put that degree to work as an IT developer, developing public sector finance applications. I did this work nearly 20 years as a small business owner and consultant, and now as an employee of the State of Wisconsin Department of Administration. I've served this community since 2001, when I was first elected to the village board as a write-in candidate. And I was later elected to the county board in 2006. In this term, my colleagues elected me to be the first person of color to chair the county board. I'm as committed today to public services I was when I ran as a write-in candidate. And I say this because I know firsthand the profound impact and lasting impact that county services have on families and communities. My mother was a Japanese immigrant, a single parent. She worked long hours as a waitress, raising my five kids and me, or five, her five kids. And it was county assistants that made sure that we, our needs were met. And that life experience is what drives me and is at the core of my service, making sure that we have access to quality equitable services. And that's at the core of why I serve.
Hi, everyone. Love seeing this room very packed. So name's Ed Ray. I am running to represent District 34 on Dane County Board. Running because I believe it's time for a change. I believe it's time for our district to have representation that prioritizes the issue that matter most to us. I believe it's time for our representative to, again, focus on the priorities that we as elected, or we as the communities expect of our elected officials. As I've mentioned before, my opponent voted to cut 1.5 million from funding from the local food banks in the 2024 budget, especially at the times where we saw increased needs. My priorities are different. I started off my campaign endorsed by former Sheriff Dave Mahoney, State Representative Ratcliffe, and a lot of the community leaders in this room. It's been an honor. A little bit about myself. As a first generation American, my parents brought me here and my siblings to US when I was eight years old. We lost everything. We were refugees, had nothing to eat. And so when I became an adult, I wanted to give back to a country that has given me so much, so much. It's why I joined the US Army National Guard to serve. It's why it's been an honor to represent this community on the village board of McFarland. And it's also why I mentor kids of formerly incarcerated parents and why I volunteer within McFarland schools. It is very important for me to give back to my community and my country. Professionally, I work as a senior consultant at Nordic Global. Math nerd, my parents knew I was stubborn, so they made me fall in love with math. But I use my skills to help healthcare, population health, and data analysis to figure out how to make our communities better. On the board, I've been a champion for our environment, for seniors, for public safety, for DNI. And I chaired the Public Safety and Public Risk Committee. Throughout all of my time on the board, I have worked really hard to bring new voices to local government. I've worked with my colleagues to solve some of those tough challenges. And my focus has always been on doing right by the community that I serve. And that will be my focus as the next supervisor for District 34. So I thank you all for having me. I thank the chambers and I thank you all for being here for this afternoon.
Question number one. What excites you the most about wanting to join the Dane County Board of Supervisors? Ed, we'll start with you.
Yeah, same thing that excited me about being on the village board. And that's bringing new perspective, addressing the concerns, meeting with people when we have tough issues, focusing on the issues that matter most to our neighbors. The county board has a big impact, as you know. Everything from A to Z, from the airport to the zoo, the county board has some responsibilities. And so in terms of areas of responsibility, things I care about or want to focus on, environmental initiatives, human services, safety net programs, and of course, public safety. Here in McFarland, I've supported, again, the expansion for the nutrition senior or nutrition manager for senior outreach. I was supportive of the Lewis Park Lake Access, and I worked for us, or supported our development of our new inclusive park. I think transparency and communication is important. And so one thing that I see other colleagues in the community or on the county board do is having regular updates with their colleagues or the community to say, hey, these are things that we're working on. These are projects, this is like working with the local government on initiative to make sure we have synergy. And so that is what I plan to do. Make sure I'm touching, updating my community. Make sure I'm working with the local officials to make sure what issues are reported to the community and having that synergy.
Awesome. Patrick?
I've learned in my service that challenging problems don't get solved or great improvements don't happen by any one person. It takes diversity of thought and collaboration. In my work, I've been most inspired and motivated by the times that I've brought people together, stakeholders together, subject matter experts, and voices of lived experiences to solve problems. And this approach renders positive results, but it's not linear and it's not easy. Let me just use one example that also addresses a criticism that I've read in the paper from Ed. He's criticized me for not hiring a director of the Office of Justice Reform. And by the way, it's the county executive that hires, not the board. And also, the interviews for that position are well underway. And we'll be seeing that filled in the coming weeks. But as an example of bringing voices together in the context of this issue, we expanded the Community Justice Council and its subcommittees to include people of lived experience and stakeholder organizations like Just Dane to the table to incorporate their expertise and bring that into action and policy. And it's one thing to bring people to the table. It's another thing to listen, and that's what we did. Take that next step to listen. And what I heard loud and clear from those stakeholders is when it comes to appointing somebody from a law enforcement background to address justice reform, it was a step in the wrong direction. And for people in the BIPOC community, what I heard was it would be a violation of trust and a message that we're not serious about reform. I listened to them. And despite the short-term discomfort, it was worth the long-term need for trust and change.
Question number two. What are some things you would like to change or at least see done differently as a member of the Dane County Board of Supervisors? Patrick?
Okay, thank you. It's a long list. But you know, like I just mentioned, we've done some good work bringing voices of lived experience to the table, to our policymaking. And I'd like to find more ways to bring lived experience to policymaking and service delivery and truly institutionalize the practice of blending data-driven decisions informed by the experience of those who use our services. And I'm always looking to improve my work and communication with people. And that's one area I know I need to do better. And I also want to support my colleagues in that effort. And so I would like to provide more options of like ready-made online communication tools to help county board supervisors communicate with their constituents and be more accessible. And then another area that's not very exciting, but I feel strongly the county needs to modernize its data systems in order to better measure outcomes. And I think this is important in both identifying where we need to improve our services, but to also help us have data to justify and diversify our funding. And that would in itself reduce the tax burden on taxpayers.
Yeah, so I believe the question is, what would I like to see done differently? Okay, I'll start off by saying throughout this campaign, I have knocked thousands of doors and I've met with a lot of people and have had a lot of conversations. And it's not necessarily what I would change. It's about what issues are important to my community and what changes my community wants to see. And so there's three areas that I've heard consistently over my time knocking doors all across our district. As my opponent mentioned, one of his opportunities is communications. I think after 18 years, if you haven't figured that out yet, yeah. But people want communications and they want transparency. They want a supervisor that's available year-round, not one that shows up during election time. They want one who's responsive to communication. They want ones who have regular office hours and meet with their constituents, their voters, to listen to them. As I look, I see a lot of supervisors do that. I do not see that in my community. People also want a supervisor who focuses on the issues that are important to our community, not on internal county board drama or politics. They care about our landfills. They care about our lake levels. They care about support of our local businesses. We've heard trustees talk about that tonight. And I'm a champion for those areas. I believe I am the change. I believe I bring that representation. People in our district also care about our neighbors. We would love the small town feel. Miguel mentioned moving here, Alyssa moving here because of the parks and the trails. That's one of the reasons, in addition to the schools. We love this beautiful area. We want to preserve that, but we also want to improve it. People in this district care about our safety nets. And I'm going to keep repeating this because a lot of you in this room, I've seen you give either money to the youth center or to the nonprofits, to the food pantry. And I find it, as I've gone to doors, people are very upset about the county's willingness to say, oh, you should have planned better over COVID, so we're cutting money from you. However, the county board supports 15%, 18% raise for other politicians. That makes no sense. We don't, we focus on the people in need. We provide for our people, our residents and our voters. And those are the issues that I've heard. And that's what I would do different. So thank you.
Perfect. Question number three. If elected into this position, what are your top three priorities? And Ed, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think I've mentioned them again. It's my priorities aligns with what the community, I'm here from the community. People in District 34, we care about a healthier Lake Conganza and Lake Wabesa. As I've gone, the lake levels are low. As you know, we're on the southern end of the Yahara chain, so we're more prone to runoffs, we're more prone to sediments. The county has done suck the muck program. I appreciate it, but I believe that we can do more in this area. I've seen that investment, again, more so in other districts and not enough in our community. Our neighbors also care about our parks. Again, we all moved to McFarland because of this natural area and for our schools. So continue to invest in our parks. And lastly, support for our businesses. I also wanted my friends to say, hey, let's go to McFarland and have a drink. Hey, let's go to McFarland and do XYZ. And I think improving, I guess kudos to the chambers. In the recent years, I've seen you all do so much more. And I believe we as elected official need to support our local businesses and we have to support our nonprofits.
Okay, so staple of my service has always been, because it's one of the valuable things in this district is our natural environment, the lakes and streams. And in my service, I've served on the Lakes and Watershed Commission and now Clean Lakes Alliance in making sure that we're moving forward in what takes a lot of years to correct sins of the past of as far as like the phosphorus levels and so forth in the lakes and streams. So that's always at the forefront for me. But also going into this next term, I'm looking at working with our state partners to get over the regulatory hurdles, creating a barrier for us to create a crisis triage center. We truly need this center to be able to provide first responders a place to take people that are experiencing substance abuse emergencies or behavioral health emergencies rather than taking them to emergency rooms or to the county jail. And we also want law enforcement to be in a position of responding to true law enforcement incidents and our healthcare and behavioral health incidents being treated as the healthcare need that they are, not a law enforcement incident. Also, another area is collaborating with partners and stakeholders to tackle our housing issues. In particular, the housing, we have a regional housing strategy that we need to turn into action, the recommendations into action to provide more workforce housing to meet the needs of growing businesses in the area as well as just addressing the deficit of housing that exists now. We're looking at 200,000 population growth by 2050. We need to address this problem starting now. And then finally, an area of focus of mine is modernizing and redeveloping the Lion Energy Center because it is a powerful economic driver for the region.
Question number four. Are you in favor of new business growth in McFarland? Please explain. Patrick?
Well, similar to the trustees, simple answer, yes. Explanation behind that, there are several. And from my days on the village board, it's still true today. And that is the imbalance of commercial development to residential development here is out of whack compared to most communities. And that puts a greater burden on residential taxpayers. So I think, you know, that's one reason I favor business development. The other is oftentimes, McFarland used to be seen as a bedroom community. Having a robust variety of businesses makes us more well-rounded and more rounded community and employment center. And I would also add that in this realm, my experience in working with others and developing relationships brings some benefit here in that I meet regularly with members of the Greater Madison area, Chamber of Commerce, and we exchange ideas. And I've been learning from them some of the trends we're seeing in employment and that one of the growing areas is high tech and life sciences. Those businesses are looking for places to locate. So in those conversations, I brought up the map and showed them, look, McFarland's next, this area. It's a blank slate. And it's just prime potential for high-end development for the tech industry. It'd be a wonderful employment base. And so that's something my history of relationship building and collaboration with others brings to this table.
The answer is absolutely yes. And I don't, I guess, not to just speak of it conceptually, I want to talk about my experience as a trustee on this village board. When I first moved there, that was something, I'm like, we need more businesses. That and the splash pad were probably the two things that hurt a lot of times from people. And people in McFarland want to be able to do more here and not take our tax or our hard-earned money to different communities like Manona or Madison. We want to invest in here. We're a younger generation with families here. And so not only is there economic impact, but it's also a welcoming place. It's a social hub, a place where you can take your dogs, where you can take, get coffee, get wine, get coffee again. But in terms of the village and what we've done, right? So there's the Atwater too, was part of that initiatives. Being creative and utilizing the tools that we have to bring businesses that are not coming organically, such as TID District, using TID financing to incentivize developers. We look at, as a village board, we have the new commercial business park that's coming. That's also going to lessen the tax burden on residents because now we have this huge commercial district. So it's not just talking about what we can do. It's actually doing what we need to do. And we've heard from our residents over and over, we need more businesses in McFarland. And I think as we look at the past board, at its current board over the couple of years, we have seen an increase in our investment in that. And regardless, as a county board supervisor, as a village board trustee, there needs to be relationships where we can work together and say, okay, how do we move forward these concerns from our community, these priorities of our community? I've done that on the village board. And as a county board supervisor, I'm always going to do right by my district because those are the people that like me and those are the people that I represent. And business growth is something over and over again. And I'm all in on that.
Question number five. In your role as a Dane County supervisor, how would you ensure that the county is welcoming and inclusive for all residents?
Yeah, I learned, I think, when I first got on the village board, someone was like, oh, congratulations. You're the first black person to be elected to the village of McFarland. And I was like, oh, did not know that. But I took that very seriously because I took that as a responsibility for all those who came before me, all those who are going to come after me. Their students, as I've heard concerns. And they're not just about what, black person, Asian person, LGBT person, veteran. It's the bigger umbrella of what those marginalized groups, those groups that need services. What can I do with my position to help those people? When Farwell Gallery opened and they wanted to do Pride in the Park, I jumped in at the meeting and said, absolutely, because I want you to be supportive. When the American Legion needs something, I jump on that and say, absolutely, because I think we have to represent all of our community members, not just a subset. I'm not straying away from that. I think everyone in this room who knows me know how committed I am to making sure that those with our voice have a voice, not just talking about it, but doing the walk as well. And it's hard work. I get it. It's hard, it's tiresome. But if we're going to be leaders, we have to be accountable to not just ourselves, but also to all of our community. And so as a county board supervisor, those beliefs, those values that I have as a village board trustee, as a person, I absolutely would bring that on the county board to make sure that everyone on that board feels supported. And if they don't feel supported, working through the complications of that, but also making sure we represent all of our areas and not just a small subset. And also, sorry, just having regular meetings to know what's going on with people because you don't know, if you don't know.
Patrick?
Okay, one of the key ways of being welcoming and inclusive is to ensure that our outward-facing services that the county provides are accessible. And this is, these are areas where I've done work that I think has earned me, why I've earned the endorsement of Adelante and Fair Wisconsin. So a couple, some examples. For the last couple of years, I've been pushing for the development of language access services because I really believe that to be accessible, we need, and welcoming, we need our departments to provide our services in an accessible way. And that starts also with language access. So I'm proud to say that that resulted in this last budget, including Language Access Coordinator. And I moved that into the Office of Equity Inclusion. And it's netting some results. We've been seeing bilingual staff increases in key areas, in particular our 911's center. And that has increased the trust from the community and people, especially of Spanish-speaking people, making calls. And I think that's also resulting in better public safety. In our parks, we're making concerted efforts to make our parks and trails more accessible, putting in accessible fishing piers. And we're seeing some of that being done in the near future at Fish Camp Park and at Babcock Park. And then it also would include some kayak launches that would be helpful for people with mobility issues. And then in our facilities, we're making sure as we redevelop and develop new facilities that our bathrooms are gender neutral and that there's adult changing stations provided. So I guess I've run out of time, is that right? So, because I have a long list here. I guess I didn't time that right. So I'll maybe try to squeeze that in the closing remarks.
So for closing, please provide any closing remarks, final statements, or other topics of interest. And we'll start with you, Patrick.
Okay. Well, again, I'll say thank you to the chamber for hosting this and all of you for listening to us tonight. I want to alleviate any concerns that, you know, because I think Ed has misstated a couple of things. In particular, in regards to the food pantry. There was never a cut to food pantries. There was debate in the budget proposal where the county executive proposed adding funds to Second Harvest by moving pandemic relief funds from one set of projects to another. And county board members and I looked at balancing needs. And we moved, instead of the proposed 6 million, we moved 4.5 million to Second Harvest and later fully funded that to the county executive's proposal. But in the meantime, we applied a million dollars to other critical needs like a Bayview Community Center that serves low-income people, people of a large immigrant population. So I just wanted to alleviate that concern. But I think, I guess I'll just come around to just saying, I love this community, my family. I've made this home, like I said, 24 years now. And, you know, it's great schools, like the trustee candidates were saying, great schools, it's brought us here, natural environment. And I'm proud of the impact that I've had when I look around from my earliest time on the county board, helping the village get the funds to acquire what is now the Orchard Park with the disc golf in it. I'm proud of bringing the Lower Yahara River Trail to McDaniel Park. And we'll be seeing that Phase Two expanding this summer or maybe fall, going from Fish Camp Park down to Lake Conganza State Park. Door Creek Wetlands are wildlife area. Lower Mud Lake Conservation Area. Wildlife area on the south end of Lake Wabesa, protecting wetlands and protecting property owners from flooding and so forth. So I think I've had a profound effect and I will continue to move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you all for such a lovely evening. And thank you all for being here. Lovely seeing new and familiar faces. I, it's been, it's been an interesting campaign. I've learned a lot from this community and I've made some new relationships. And I've got to talk with a lot of community members to really understand the issues that matter in this community. We started off this campaign very strong because people truly believed it was time for a change. Over 75 public endorsements, a lot of believers in this room, majority of my village board, business owners, business leaders, school board members, new and former village board trustees. Before I jump into, yeah, before I jump into that, I wanted to circle back to my opponent's remark about the food pantry. Facts are facts. This is not an opinion. My opponent voted to cut 1.5 million dollars for food, both food pantries and 2014's budget. There are four proposed amendments that he had a chance to oppose. He said, no. Patrick wants to deny it. He wants to fight about it. He wants to change the narrative, it's political speak. We didn't cut it, we reallocated, we shifted. The fact of the matter is, the county board, the county executive not only proposed a budget, which allocated $6 million to food pantry, he also left a million dollars extra to shift funds around. Under my opponent's leadership, not only was that maxed out, but they cut 1.5 million dollars from funding. That is not an opinion, that is not a fact, that is a record, that's online. You can search it. In fact, his quote was, "They should have planned better, like everybody else." As if funding food, or this funding for people is temporary. He spoke to, well, I've given the money before, I think $30 million. People are hungry. We talked about affordable housing. One of the things I've learned, as you invest more in affordable housing, there is an increase for food pantries as well because whether you know it or not, some of those people have to pick the side between rent and food. We had a pandemic, we have an economy that's shifty. People are hungry. We have to care about our neighbors. And so it's not a matter of anything I want to debate. The information's out there. Melissa Ratcliffe is here. People who have been on the county board can speak to that. What I want to speak to is about myself. I believe it's time for a change. This community believe, long, sorry, can I get just the 10 seconds he got? Is that all right?
10 seconds.
This community believes it's time for a change. I'm going to focus on what matters most to the people of this community. You can learn more about my campaign at edray.com. I ask for your support and your vote on April 2nd. And thank you all for having and being here this evening.
All right, thanks.
All right. Thanks to both of you, and we will take about a 10-minute break, just so audiovisual can get ready for the school board candidates. So I will reset this up here, and we'll get started in about 10 minutes. Thank you.